So let's call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. And Nikki, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nikki. And item B is going to be called to the public. I have no slips. Is there anybody online that would like to say anything? Okay, then we will go to action item C. Discussion possible action to adopt fiscal year 2024-2025 tentative budget. County manager, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the deputy county manager so he could go through with the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Morning.
Members of the public, good morning.
Just going to interrupt you, Maricio, just so that everybody knows Supervisor Reese is attending this meeting virtually.
Yes.
Thank you, Maricio.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
No problem. Good morning again. The purpose of the meeting today is to present the tentative budget for fiscal year 24-25. I will start with a presentation. Before that, I want to thank the board, of course, for their continued support and all the elected officials and department heads also for keeping their expenditures up to their respective budget. I would also like to thank county manager, Mr. Valdez, and human resources director, Mr. Romano, for their assistance and support throughout this process as well. The county continues to be proactive with federal and state grants. The county received an $8.6 million allocation from the Arizona Department of Transportation for the I-19 rear record drive and Ruby Road improvements. $4.8 million from AC DEMA for sheriff's office communication equipment and detention center security equipment, as well as additional funds and health-related grants, which allows us to offset many general fund expenditures. We have approximately in the works $14 million in grant funding for capital projects, including the Ephraim Canyon Project, the Ruby Road Bridge Project, the historic 1904 Courthouse renovation projects, and then multiple airports that continue in fiscal year 25. I'll start off with going through the budget. I'll start going with review all the schedules that play an important role in determining how we process our budget. And then if the board has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those. Schedule A provides the summary schedule of estimated revenues and expenditures for the coming fiscal year. So for the general fund, we're budgeting $44,504,618. Last year, we budgeted $42,111,916. Special revenue funds, our budgeted expenditures for fiscal year 25 are $90,481,618. Last year, budgeted expenditures were $70,396,867. So the difference are the projections and allocations anticipated during the year for federal and state grants. This is an increase due to, again, to the $8.6 million road rear record interchange allocation, as well as the Ruby Road Bridge Project. The debt service fund, the budgeted expenditures for FY '25 are $895,910. These went down a little bit from last year. This is just due to administrative costs in our debt service capacity. Our capital project funds for fiscal year 25, we're budgeting $14,772,570. For last year, they were $18,563,512. The drop in that figure is due to mainly the airport payment preservation project. That was a large project last year that we budgeted close to $3 million. That this, the funding agency, which is a federal funding agency, they're going to be moving, going directly. So we're not going to be the fiscal agent for that. They're going to be doing the project. So we are not budgeting for that particular project this year in our budget. So that's the difference that you see, the gap in between those two numbers, plus additional airport projects that are almost, we're almost closing out at the end of this year. So that was a reduction in that $14 million to $18 million amount. On the enterprise funds, which is the landfill, our budgeted expenditures for this year are $8,836,450. Last year, they were $9,115,172. That difference is the revenue projections that we have expected for this year. They dropped last year, so we're projecting that trend to continue as well. So there's that gap there. So total for all funds in Schedule A, we have for budget expenditures $159,441,466. And again, the variance is going to be due to anticipated allocations, federal and state grants, that we anticipate receiving for this fiscal year. I can entertain any questions that the board might have on Schedule A.
What percentage of the budget is grant-funded?
I'm sorry?
What percentage of the budget is grant-funded? Off the top of your head?
I would think that's probably about 60% that were grant-funded, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So that trend hasn't changed.
How much are we looking to lose to the state with the budget changes at the state level?
As far as we know so far, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have about $345,000 of cost shifts that the state has shifted over to us. Any additional questions Schedule A? Okay, I'll move on to Schedule B. So Schedule B will provide the overall, the property tax levy amounts for primary and secondary tax levy. So overall, our local sales tax revenue has been increasing on an average approximately about 10% compared to last year. And our state shared sales tax has been increasing on an average about 12% to last year. So we've seen a continued trend of sales tax revenue increasing over the last years. Operationally, however, our county services have increased to the point of about $1 million for the general fund compared to last year. We are also, again, facing increase in cost shifts due to the state of Arizona budget shortfall, which I just mentioned previously. Increases are due to continuous rise in retirement costs, healthcare costs, liability insurance costs. And then our all tax and access contribution also gave us that large push over to of cost shift.
And all tax is Arizona long-term?
Arizona long-term. Long-term care system, yes, thank you.
For the people that don't know the acronyms.
Correct, thank you, yes. That's a requirement that every county needs to be part of, so that's our share of it. But this year, it went up $300,000 on our end. So cognizant of anticipated cost shifts and staff, as staff, we are recommending that we keep the tax rate, the current tax rate is 4.0265. Our recommendation as staff is for the proposed primary tax rate is to keep it the same. That will give us a tax levy amount of $17,779,670, which is an increase of about $1.1 million from the previous year. The proposed secondary tax rate is driven by the primary tax rate, so it's typically 20% of the primary tax rate. So if we don't have any changes in the proposed primary tax rate, the secondary rate would remain the same also at .8053. That would give us more or less translates to a tax levy amount of $3,282,480 for the secondary primary tax, secondary tax rate, which is about a 235 additional tax revenue. Do we have any questions on Schedule B, which is the primary and secondary tax rate?
I don't.
Not yet.
Okay. I'll move on to Schedule C. Schedule C provides the summary of funds of revenues other than property taxes. So in that schedule, we sum up all the estimated revenue streams that will be coming in besides property taxes. So for the general fund, our estimated revenues are at $15,730,311. For FY '24, our estimated revenues were $15,163,246. And then year-to-date, actual revenues are right now $20,351,558. That large increase is due to the increase in sales tax revenue and other general fund revenues. For the special revenue funds, we're anticipating receiving $39,492,578. Those are the special revenue funds, which include mostly all grant, federal and state allocations. Then for total for all funds, we have estimated revenues of $70,834,728. The difference, we have a little bit less than last year. That's due to the fluctuation of the grants and mostly that airport grant that we're not handling, that we're not the fiscal agent, that the direct grantor is taking care of. That's the difference that you see in that gap as well. Any questions on Schedule C?
No, sir.
No questions.
Moving on to Schedule D. Schedule D provides the transfers in and out. That means the mandated funding that includes the jail district. And that's typically the large one. We are mandated by state statute to transfer from the general fund. Every year, it changes. It's based on the formula with the Consumer Price Index and the labor statistics. So there's a big component on how that's calculated every year, and it changes. This year is $4.5 million that we have to transfer from the general fund to the jail district. That's the means of effort. There's also the environmental health fund that the general fund supports. And then the animal control fund as well that we support at 50%. And the other 50%, the city of Nogales with the NIGA that we have. There's also cash matches there for the federal and state grants. So all in all, we're looking at about $6.9 million in transfers for Schedule D.
Okay, any questions?
No, sir.
One.
Okay, Schedule E is a summary by department of expenditures within each fund type. So that gives you more of a detail. When we go back to Schedule A, we, I talked about the $44 million that we budgeted for the general fund. This is that same amount that you see there, but it gives you more detail on each department that's part of the general fund. So all the departments are there. The budgeted expenditures for fiscal year 24-25 and then actual expenditures in the middle column. So that amount is at $44,504,618. Any questions? I'll be more than glad to answer on Schedule E.
And last year, we budgeted $42 million. And right now, we've, the actual expenses are $30 million. Are we pretty much running at course?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that's correct. That shows you that we're keeping everything under budget. The general fund is working well. We budget for certain positions that might stay vacant. There's cost savings there. Certain elements, certain line items that weren't expended to the actual budget amount. So there's that cost savings. Keep in mind, though, that that $30 million amount is going to grow. We do have a 60-day accrual period. So what does that mean? That means that we have two months that we have the opportunity to pay for expenses that fall in the previous fiscal year, which is FY '24. So when I present the next budget, the final budget in August, that amount's going to change. So that $30 million will increase.
Perfect. I have no further questions.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on Schedule E?
Okay. Now, this is where I have questions, Maricio. I think that this is, you know, when you go through this, this is when you do your budget meetings with the departments. This is the stuff that you're working with the department heads and the elected officials trying to put this together. I appreciate the fact that you do go through that process and you're trying to build a budget, not just for this year, but looking at their capital expenses and their expenses over the next three to five years so we can get a better control over this. So I think that's good work.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Schedule G will provide the compensation for full-time employees and personnel. That basically gives you a bird's eye view there of how many full-time employees this organization has and what's the cost included with salaried employees, as well as all the ERs, which are retirement, healthcare, and any other type of benefit costs that we have. So for the general fund, we're estimating for this fiscal year, it's going to be $20,393,644. That equates to about 228 full-time equivalent employees. For special revenue funds, it's about $13,819,000. Those are the grant funds. Those are capital funds, project funds that have, may have any type of employees. And that's to the tune of 193 FTEs as well. So total for all funds for this organization, we're looking at $34,861,346 with about 430 employees.
So we have 430 employees providing services for the constituents of Santa Cruz County, and of those, 193 are grant-funded?
That is correct, yes, Mr. Chair.
And FTE is full-time equivalent?
FTE is a full-time equivalent, correct. That can be a combination of part-time people, and we have two part-timers. We consider that to be one full-time employee, correct.
Thanks for explaining that.
Any other questions on these two slides?
No, sir.
So we analyzed many trends and statistics, and we considered the rise of inflation. We looked at the current average Consumer Price Index. That is approximately 3.3. The 2024 Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment was 3.2%. The range for the 2025 Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment is between 2.6 and 3%. For a continual effort to retain valuable employees and as well as recruit professional talent, this year's budget, staff is recommending a 3% Cost of Living Adjustment. And we're also recommending an additional three steps in our current 34-step program. So what does that mean? That means that we're recommending a 3% Cost of Living Adjustment for all eligible employees to be applied. Plus, we want to take them to, in advance them three steps. So that would equate about to about a 6% Cost of Living expense when you calculate both of those recommendations. That in turn would be about a $570,000 cost to the general fund plus ERs.
So, Maricio, you and I both understand what a step is. Could you explain what a step is to the general public?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The county hired a consultant to review this past year, review all positions and interviewed all employees. That happened a while back. And they recommended a new, basically, a new step program. What does that mean? That means that there's ranges that fall within the positions. And then there's steps, and every step is a 1% increment. So if an employee falls in a certain range and they're considered, let's say, step one, then step two would be a 1% increase from that salary. Step three would be an additional 1%. So every, it's a 34-step. Every step in between is a 1% increment on that.
And a step increase usually is based on years of service?
Correct. So a step is, it would be on every year of service. We're recommending that for every year, for every year of service, we, every completed year of service, we provide a one-step increase, correct?
And that's a transition this year because in the past, we've done three-step increases. A step was considered for three years.
Correct. So in the past, the recommendation of the program was a three-step, but the employee would have to wait three years for that to happen if they were in the same position. The recommendation now is to continue that, however, do it every year for 1%.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
The last slide that I have, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is a slide that's provided by the Arizona Department of Revenue. That's basically indicating the maximum allowed that the board has the authority to levy for this year is $20,445,848. And if we go back to the Schedule B, that we are, the amount that we're actually requesting from the board or recommending is listed at $17,779,670, which is way below the maximum allowed by the state of Arizona.
That's the maximum amount allowable?
Correct. That's set and statute, and there's a formula. Of course, you see that formula there. It's based on different, it's based on our centrally assessed values and different amounts. And that calculation changes over the year. It depends on new construction and depends on many different variables. So every year, it is modified and it's changed. But that's something that the state provides, and that's the authority that the board would have to have the maximum allowed, correct?
Okay.
Okay, well.
And in our conversations, we asked for you to come up with scenarios of 2%, 2.5% decreases in the tax rate?
That's correct. So I'll go back to that Schedule B. So our current tax rate right now is 4.0265, and that would equate that $17,779,000 tax levy amount. The exercise that the board asked me to provide was a 2 cent decrease, a 2.5 cent decrease, and a 5 cent decrease, correct? And I have those numbers for you. Mr. Chair, what numbers do you want to see?
Well, I'd ask you for the 5%, but I think you'd fall over on the floor.
I think I would.
Let's start talking about the 2% and the 2.5%.
It's 2 cents, not 2%. Okay. So it's 2 cents. Please, that makes it worse. It's 2 cents. So entertaining a 2 cent decrease in our current tax rate, our primary tax rate, that would lower the tax rate to 4.0065. And the tax levy amount would be $17,691,357, which is about an $88,000 difference from the current primary tax rate that's right now. So that additional revenue would be about $1,061,000 with lowering 2 cents.
And that also affects the secondary tax rate, right, Maricio?
Manny, we can't hear you. Reese?
Yeah. Can you hear me? I'm not muted, so.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, so that also includes the proposed secondary tax rate that would change, right? Because that's figured on the primary tax rate if you lower it by 2 cents.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that is correct. The secondary tax rate is driven by the primary tax rate, and it's 20% of that. So any type of change that's made on the primary would affect also the secondary. So in that example, for the 2 cent decrease, for the secondary tax rate, it would be .004 cents of the equivalent of that 20%. And that decrease would amount to about $3.2 million of tax levy amount for the secondary tax rate, which is for ours, it's a flood control district.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With increased assessed value, increased sales tax revenue. I think our public deserves relief. Yeah, property tax revenue.
Percent where it comes from.
So, yeah, we would be, the way you have it set up, we would be collecting more than last year, obviously, right, without?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that is correct. That's based on, that's based on the assessed value increase, correct? So even if we leave it on, that would have that additional sales tax revenue or additional tax revenue on property tax, correct?
If we change nothing, then we'll increase our revenue. What we have is we have an increase, our costs increase, our, the cost shifts and the salary increase, the 2%, the 2 cent deduction covers both of those items.
Correct.
It would cover 6%. It would cover the state mandates.
I feel confident after doing that analysis, if the board decides to decrease, lower the taxes by 2 cents, then that additional revenue would cover those extra costs that I'm proposing or that staff is proposing in this budget, correct?
Okay.
And the recommendation we make today, we can always go lower, but we can't go higher.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, members of the board. You know, this sets a cap, you know, once you approve and adopt today's budget. But you are correct. You cannot go any higher. You can always go lower, correct?
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
2 cent? I move that we decrease 2 cent under tax valuation.
Manny, can you hear?
Yeah, so I have a problem with it. But is that at that time, to do the motion now, is Maricio concluded with his recommendation? Or I mean, his presentations? So they connect on it?
You're absolutely right. That was inappropriate for me to ask for the motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, members.
Let's finish Maricio's presentation, then we'll address it when we go back to the item. Thank you.
I'll take my motion back.
Okay, thanks.
I'm glad you're there to keep us straight, Manny.
Well, yeah, we all do a good job. Don't cut yourselves short.
Bob was napping. Which is usually my job. Okay. Maricio, do you have anything else?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Well, seeing we asked you a million questions during the presentation. Are there any other questions?
No question, Mr. Chairman, but just a comment. I do want to thank staff, the electeds in the departments for working well with management and finance. It's become work well together that we're able to continue to provide services for our constituents and at the same time, being able to give this 3% COLI and then a three-step, which amounts to a 6% raise to our employees. And I think it's always important that we, as a county and as a board, demonstrate to our employees that we appreciate their hard work because they're the ones that can make us look better, can make us look terrible. And I think it's important that as we move forward, that we continue to do this. And I think we have the opportunity because of others, that, you know, we're able to at least lower the tax rate a little bit. It's not a lot, but, you know, it's something better than nothing, some people would say. But it kind of also shows our constituents that we're very aware of what's going on and that we want to do everything to be able to assist them as well. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Malar.
I too want to thank Jesus, Mr. Valdez, Mr. Chavez, Mr. Romano also, and all our departments. I know when we brought the class in comp, and we had our challenges. And they went back and forth. We went back and forth with Judge Fink and the courts. And I thank everyone for working with staff. And that's what it's all about, working together in a unified manner to move forward. I just want to pose a hypothetical question.
I just want to pose a hypothetical question pertaining to levy limit. You know, our levy limit right now is $20 million, right? South 32 is proposing to collect, once they get going, almost the amount that we collect. What's gonna happen if we go over that levy limit?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so there's two factors when it comes to when more taxes come into our county. One of it is the expenditure limit, another one is the levy limit, right? Those are all functions of population and increase and, help me out, what is it?
Valuation.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, it's considered based on population, and we include floating population, of course, on that, and it's a formula that the state provides every year. Now, that formula has been increasing, well, that amount has been increasing, you know, periodically. However, it's still a concern that, you know, our management and Mr. Valdez and I are wanna move forward with putting up to the voters in a couple of years so that that expenditure limitation is raised.
Right. Inflation plays the other part. So the first step is, what we're gonna propose to the board is, let's deal with the expenditure limit. It's a vote of the people, like Mr. Chavez said. And the second one is also looking at the levy limit, right? Those are two different functions that could possibly, we need to increase so that we could take advantage of all the property taxes and excessive valuation, centrally assessed valuation that are, that are gonna happen in our county. So to answer your question is, we look for the expenditure limit, we look at the base year and increase that. For the levy limit, we look at that figure, and every seven years, we would have to adjust it or increase it. And that's also vote of the people.
Okay.
Well, and can you also let them know with the ELRs, if, even if we were to have the extra cash, and we don't have that authority to exceed the expenditure limit, then we can't spend that money, and that's the whole idea of having the community allow us to raise that expenditure limit, because otherwise, you know, we're.
Okay.
Hello?
Keep going, Manny. We can hear you.
Oh, because I heard somebody say something. So that would be a reason to go out and ask the community to support, because if we're getting more money in, we can also visit, lowering taxes even more. So there's a combination of things that we could do with that. So that's why it's important. So, I mean, Supervisor Malar is correct that once the mine does go into operation, then how is it going to affect how we deliver services or how we expend revenues for services? Anyway, just my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have, members of the board, I have a comment, and the budget that's presented before you, of course, includes that opportunity for employees to have that 3% and then that three-step. That's very generous, and, you know, we thank you for supporting that. You know, personally, I think that's gonna make a huge impact on this organization, you know, and that's gonna change the mindset of many people that work here. That's, again, I think that's very generous on behalf of the board, so we thank you for that support.
You're welcome.
Well, we live in, you know, interesting times, you know. We are, the proximity of Santa Cruz County to Pima County, employees that are qualified for these positions can find higher-paid positions for doing the same work if they're willing to commute 60 miles. There also, we're having issues and challenges with law enforcement, retention, and jail, and detention officers, and many different places in the county. Even in the courts, they're having these same issues where people that are, they come in, they get trained, they're working, you know, they're trying to make a better life for themselves. They look to see what's happening 60 miles up the road, and you're within, you're within, you know, a reasonable commute range, which is unique for Santa Cruz County versus other smaller counties, which are much further away from large populations, counties with large populations. So I think that the 3% COLA increase, I think the 3% step increase are reasonable at this time, based on what's going on in our economy. And I know that we asked you to lower your expectations by 2 cents, and we might ask you to lower it a little bit more later, but we'll have to see how these numbers all play out. But thank you very much for all your efforts and your team putting all this together. It's well done.
Thank you.
And so, are we done with?
We're done with the presentation?
Presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve fiscal year '24, '25, tenet the budget as presented by Mr. Chavez with a 2 cent increase, tax increase.
Decrease.
Decrease, I'm sorry. Well, I apologize for that. 2 cent decrease.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item D adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you guys later. Take care.
Thanks, Manny.
Bye.